Good evening and welcome to the Town Council's meeting of March 27th. If you kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to have the girls from Troop 62031 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God and in Hisself with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful job. Thank you, girls. All right, announcements, I just have upcoming meetings and Voting Day information. It's Thursday, April 10th and Thursday, April 24th. Regular council meetings at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And a very important date to remember is Tuesday, April 8th. From 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM is our annual meeting Voting Day. And you have to find your regular polling, your regular polling places. If you have to find out where they are, you can go to the town website, which will give you a link directly to the Secretary of State's office. And you can find out your polling place. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we'll continue on the voting theme. Effective November 11th, 2024, affidavits are no longer allowed for registrations to vote. Therefore, anyone wishing to register to vote at the Town Clerk's office or on Election Day, every one must provide a paper or electronic form proof of age, citizenship, birth certificate, naturalization papers, or U.S. passport, as well as a photo ID. Change of name paperwork of marriage or divorce, domicile, driver's license, bill, lease paperwork. Without these documents, you will not, you will be asked to go get them and come back. You will not be allowed to vote. So, once again, there has been a legislation change to how to register for same-day voting or registering to vote at the Town Clerk's office. This is up on our website, merrimacnh.gov underneath Town Clerk Voting, so.
Paul, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
In the past, as Town Councilors, we've had to deal with this, so I'm curious. There have been citizens who refused to show their ID to get the ballot, and they would do an affidavit. Now, the affidavit's no longer existing?
They're no longer allowed to register to vote.
But that doesn't?
I, to be honest with you, I'll have to get you that answer because I do not have that.
We can ask of the Pauls, too.
Yeah, but I will get that answer and get that out to the Town Council before, so you know exactly what you need to do and not do in those circumstances. There will be new voting machines at the April 8th Town Election for School, Town and School Election. These machines process ballots more efficiently, and we ask the Town voters to notice how the ballots are processed and counted. So, they went through training with them. Remember that the people at the ballot boxes cannot touch your ballot, so make sure it totally goes in to the ballot. They're not allowed to touch it. If it falls on the floor, they're not allowed to pick it up and put it in the machine. Only the person who voted can put their ballot in the machine. So, just be leery and make sure you watch your ballot go all the way through the process and gets collected in the machine. Dog licenses has begun. Notices will be mailed on March 31st. All dogs should be licensed by April 30th, where a penalty and fees may be applied to register your dog after April 30th. The first hazardous household collection day of the 2025 season will be on Saturday, April 19th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 25 Crown Plaza, Crown Street in Nashua. The price went up this year. For $20 per vehicle, Merrimack residents can bring up to 10 gallons or 20 pounds of waste. That went up from 10 last year, so it's now $20. Merrimack wastewater facilities, please announce that the compost sales and giveaway is now open for the 2025 season. Merrimack residents may receive compost that no charge if you have a non-hydraulic vehicle and for a nominal fee of $5 per yard if you have a hydraulic vehicle. Resident cards and tickets for hydraulic vehicles may be obtained at the main office of the wastewater facility located at 36 Mass. Road, Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 2:30, and Saturdays and Sundays from 7:00 AM to 2:30 at the facility. Exact cash or check only. Please bring your driver's license and proof of registration, your vehicle registration. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next is comments from the present public. If you'd like to address the council, you can come to the mic. I've seen no one coming forward. What I'd like to do without objection is move item number 1 under New Business, the Girl Scout Project Presentation. The council is to be presented with Girl Scout Troops 62031's project requesting to plant trees at one of the town-owned parks. And so, you are all set up with a mic. Good evening, ladies.
Hi, we're Troop 62031, and today we're asking you to plan a tree with the Girl Scout chief promise for Girl Scout climate change.
We want to plant trees in Frazier Square, and we want to plant the Harvester Peach and the Centennial Star Magnolia. We think these would be good trees because they aren't very tall and they are also not very thick. They can both survive in Number Five Zone, which is the zone we are in.
We want to place trees so we have more oxygen and so we can help the environment.
We want to plant trees to make more habitats for birds and other animals. We also want to plant trees to make Frazier Square look pretty, more environmental, and less man-made. Please let us plant trees so we can make an awesome environment.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
You guys did a wonderful job. So, does anybody have any questions of these young ladies? That's a good question.
How many trees?
Yeah, right over there.
One of each kind, so a Harvester Peach tree and a Centennial Star Magnolia.
Do you know about where you might be, where you would like to plant them?
So, we want to plant one tree right there and another tree right there.
Do you know if they're on the main road or are they on the back near the flower shop?
Okay, let's describe where they are on the map, okay? So, one is by the bench that is already existing in the square, and one is kind of on the edge along Railroad Ave, so it's further back.
The road in back.
Jennifer?
Thanks for coming tonight. That was a good presentation. When are you hoping to be able to plant these?
After you guys approve it, we're going to place the order and then we'll see when they come in, but we're planning for April or May, definitely before school is out because that's when our season ends for Girl Scouts.
Great, thank you.
Nancy?
I just wanted to say that was a fantastic presentation. I know I was a Girl Scout once, and I remember doing all kinds of these things, and we were not as prepared as you girls are, so awesome job. Thank you for thinking about our environment and nature, giving, you know, our wildlife a place to call home and to make our town pretty, so thank you so much. I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Are all the important things of, you know, the policies that we've come kind of together with, they'll fit in for the most part?
I believe so. I just, the circumference of the trees that you're going to be planting?
So, we picked all trees that were less than 15 feet tall and less than 15 feet wide, specifically so that you could still see Merrimack Flower Shop behind them and so that they wouldn't, you want to say it?
So they don't hit the power lines.
Right, exactly.
Yep, for the most part, yeah. Yeah, they seem to have met the requirements. And we talked, but ladies, do you know what size buckets they're in? Are they in a five-gallon bucket, these trees, or?
They're in a two-quart bucket. They're only two years old, so they're like this big.
So, they're smaller trees.
They'll grow, but they start small.
So, will you or someone from DPW or whatever be there to make sure of the placement?
So, we already coordinated with Lori from DPW.
Oh, great.
And so, we'll pick a day and tell her, and if she wants to be there, she's welcome to be there.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure they're going to be doing it on a weekend since it's a school year, so if we have to. Dawn's in the back shaking her head.
I know they would not want to get off school to do this.
I know. I don't know why they don't want to go, you know, be in school, but Dawn's in the back behind shaking her head saying somebody will be there if they need to help.
All right.
Nice job, ladies.
Any further questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
As we're looking at Nancy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this awesome idea by the Girl Scouts and for Paul to sign anything if he needs to sign anything.
And I'll make a second.
Motion by Nancy Murphy, seconded by Mackenzie. There's no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? 6-0-0. And Peter, yes, Peter, sorry about that. Peter Alvin has been excused from this evening's meeting, but thank you, ladies.
And the town thanks you very much, ladies.
All right, now we'll go back to regular order. Item number 1, resignation recognitions. Yeah, we'll start this again. We have a resignation and a certificate to present to Mark Williams for his service to the Planning Board, and I don't believe he's here this evening, Paul. And I don't, I don't have the certificate, so his, I don't recall his years of service. I think it was a term, was it not, Paul?
I believe he was a one-term representative on the Planning Board. He's relocated out of Merrimack, so that's why he's getting off the planning board. Yeah, he was just appointed recently.
All right, so what's the pleasure on the resignation of Mark Williams?
Make a motion to approve his resignation?
Second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed or abstained?
With appreciation.
With appreciation. 6-0-0. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. No appointments? We don't have a public hearing? Updates from our legislative delegation? We had nothing in the email?
No, we didn't have anything in the mail, but I just would like to say that it's been a very busy couple of days, as I've been shooting off email messages up to our legislators over a number of different bills that have come up over the time. The one that is most concerning now that I am working on a response for, and hopefully we'll be getting it out shortly, is Senate Bill 297, which is dealing with our Health Trust in our pooled account. Health Trust brings our health insurance, provides our health insurance to the town of Merrimack, and they're our, basically, they act as a third party and minister for our health insurance plan. There are new regulations about how this pooled account is supposed to act, and really what they're looking at and what I can see is that they want to make us a, our own health insurance care provider, that we have to have a, we reserve trust up to 4% of our annual billing from Health Trust, just in case our bills go over what our premiums are for the year. So, if our premiums are, you know, $100,000, they want $4,000 in this reserve account. Our premium for health insurance is around $4 million. So, take 4% of $4 million. They want us, over the next four years, to have that money in a reserve account or a trust if we have to pay for additional fees, if we go over that $4 million in claims. So, it's a very tricky bill. I've been holding off on bringing it forward because I've been trying to gather as much information from both sides as possible to actually be able to talk intelligently about it. I had a call with another one of my counterparts today over it, and I think with his conversation and what I have read, I'll be able to bring something forward to our legislators in the next couple of days, so that when it does come to the House, it already passed the Senate, so when it does come to the House to see it. And it's really, if they don't, it's, let it go to committee, because this was a last-minute bill that was presented in the 11th hour, and it's a last-minute bill, and we really don't know how it's going to be implemented for our communities. Like a community of us, we could lose our health insurance, but we wouldn't lose our health insurance until July 1st of 2026. A small community that is on a January billing, if the bill gets passed, and say it gets passed in June, they could lose their coverage in six months, which is January of 2026. So, there's a lot of, it's not, there's a lot that needs to be looked at, and so the best part would be to bring this bill into committee. So, 297 is going to be coming forward, and that's really one of concern right now that we're looking at.
Is that the one that Health Trust said they'd have to stop?
Yes, that's the one.
They would pull?
They would have to, they're going to, they're going to shut down.
If that passes?
Right, if that passes, and that will only leave one pooled health provider in the state. The other, there's three right now. The other one is very small, and they would have to pull out two because they don't have the financial resources. So, that would leave one. That said they can potentially do this, and it doesn't look good. But for our community, with all the covered lives in the town and the school, we'd be able to go to market and actually get a good rate, but we have other smaller towns and we have other groups within, like the library and Merrimack Village District, that are very small, that wouldn't be able to go and get a good rate if they go out to the market.
Because they're considered separate from the town?
Yeah, they would be considered separate. The library can jump on with the town and we could go out together. But every day, we'd have to see if MVD could, if a provider would do that, and I don't know if a provider would do that. So, but they're, you know, so it's not just town of Merrimack. It affects the school, it affects MVD, it affects other communities as well, so it's not just a Merrimack issue. It's a 294 town and 60 or 80 school districts throughout the state, too. So, it's a really big issue. And I don't remember if you sent it or if I got it somewhere else, but there's a fact sheet on that from the Secretary of State's office. The Secretary of State's office sent out a fact sheet, and then Health Trust today sent out a well-written fact sheet of why, what they're asking to do, why it's different. Because Health Trust doesn't act like that. So, for instance, if I pay $4 million in premiums and we have $4.2 million in claims, they don't come after us for that extra $200,000. This bill tells them they have to come after us for that extra $200,000. They use a pooled account, they use their reserves to pay for that. Versus the same thing, if I only spend $3.2 million of my $4 million, it goes into this reserve account, and then if they're over their reserve limits, they pass that out for the whole, the whole group. So, that will probably stay the same with this bill, so even if I spend less, they're not going to refund me the $800,000. It would be self-insuring that any amount over what our premiums would be. And I can see premiums being jacked a little bit more than what it is. We fortunately, in the town, have really controlled our healthcare costs. We haven't seen the spikes. Last year, we had a reduction in our healthcare cost. Most other communities had a 17%, 18% increase in healthcare cost. Honestly, some of the healthcare costs in those other communities are driven by their contracts, union contracts. So, the insurance companies do not act the way that this bill says they do act and that they're trying to protect them from. What problem is this bill trying to solve? This bill is trying to solve an issue with the insurances going up 17. What happened this year is Health Trust spent, during COVID, they had a lot of reserves, so they gave back a lot of money during COVID because people weren't going out. Well, now, people are starting to get these procedures. So, based on past history, some of these accounts have been lower, meaning what we were paying. So, now, they ran into a fact where they had to use a lot of their reserves. So, in this year's billing with Health Trust, there was a portion of your rate that was to refund their, their reserve, so to speak, so that if they get into an account there. Also- You mean rebuild their reserve? Rebuild their reserve. Well, the actuarial from the Secretary of State basically said you're losing $2.5 million or whatever it is, and if this continues with your projections, you're going to lose $12 million this year. Health Trust is saying, no, we're not. We're actually going to make money this year. We just had a bad three months because we're getting caught up with all these previous claims. So, there's this back and forth between actuarials. There's this back and forth between Secretary of State's office, which I have no idea why the Secretary of State's involved with insurance when we have an insurance commissioner up in Concord. So, there's that back and forth, too, between the Secretary of State and does this go over to insurance? Does it stay with the Secretary of State? So, the problem they're solving, I really don't, I can't give you a good answer. I can just speculate of why it's happening, but it seems to me like it's a power struggle. Thanks. And I didn't get any other, I want to, I do want to thank all the representatives that I did reach out with emails over the last couple of days, and there were responses back, who responded back to me and say, thank you very much. It's nice to know that when I do send an email, some people do read it, so I appreciate that.
Nancy?
Sure, thank you. As Paul said, it's been really busy in Concord. We were there all day yesterday and all day today because we had to have all the bills moved out of the House for crossover, so the Senate bills can come over to the House, and we'll send all our bills over to the Senate. Just a couple of bills, I was just trying to review, actually, one I'll mention first that's really important to Merrimack is both Representative Mooney and Representative Rung are on House Finance, different divisions, but that's really helpful to us because a lot of, there's a lot of strategy, there's a lot of moving parts, and sometimes when things don't go the way we want them to, maybe in committee or in the House, the budget bill, the trailer bill, HB2, is a good way to move things forward. And one of the things that we've been working hard on is the Continental Boulevard concern. So, I understand Representative Mooney and Rung have this amendment that they are going to be bringing forward tomorrow, I believe, to House Finance Division 2 that will delete from the Department of Tenure Plan that little reference to Merrimack. So, it doesn't have a fiscal note, so I just talked to Representative Rung on the way home that they think it, you know, it's got a good chance of just moving it right out of that section of, which will become a bill, HB2, that trailer bill. So, with any luck, you know, that's one more way for us to work towards that. So, we're sort of strategizing from all angles. HB 602 was my bill that actually was brought to me by our police chief, Brian LeVake, and our former chief, Denise Roy. And it's a program that Chief Roy works with in Florida called U-Impact, and it's an online victim impact panel program for those who have been found guilty of driving under the influence or driving under the influence that's pled down to reckless or negligent driving. And the, we got it through committee, and we heard during exec session, it was 16-0, which, so my full committee supported that, which was great. And it went through the full House yesterday on consent. And I'm hopeful that the governor just appointed me to the new governor's task force on highway safety, and I'm not sure why, and I'm hoping it was that bill, that she likes it, so that there might be some support for that in the Senate when we get there. So, with any luck, that'll go through. I know Chief Roy is planning to come back from Florida to testify, and Chief LeVake was there as well. So, thank you to both of them because it's really, you know, people showing up that's making a difference. Just a couple of other bills that I'll mention. HB 199, it was a bill that extends the statute of limitations to 20 years on civil actions related to damage from PFAS, and that was, was a cosponsor of that, and it was ITL'd, so that unfortunately did not, did not pass. The HB 288, it would require absentee ballots be, it would require that if you were going to request an absentee ballot for an election, you had to rank that request six months prior to the election. And that passed along, it's out of voice vote. HB 602, I told you about. HB 481 will move the state primary date to the second Tuesday in June. That means that legislators, people filing for, to be a state rep, would be filing in March, and they would have to campaign during the legislative session, but it won't apply to 2026, but that passed. And there's, there's a, I can't even go on, I could be here all night telling you things that actually will impact Merrimack, but I want to thank Town Manager McKelly. We've been texting the last couple of days, every bill that I knew that would affect our community, I would, you know, ask if a particular bill had a, he could perceive that there would be impact on the town, and he was awesome. Thank you for first thing in the morning, you know, I gave him a list this morning, I think of 13 to 14 bills, said, okay, just tell us. But it really helps us, you know, vote for our communities, and so, thank you for that. And I'll-
I've got a request to go to law school.
Thank you, Nancy. Next on the agenda is Town Manager's report.
I'll keep this real brief because I have some really great news. The 800 system from Verizon, we got the go-ahead to be able to get on the property and start constructing and doing our test pits.
Miracles happen.
So, I got that news this morning. Actually, on Monday, received an email asking for our insurance certificates. So, I was like, all right, we're there, and then I sent it up to our insurance company, and they're like, well, we want to review all the contracts. I'm like, you guys already did. So, but today I got binder, additionally insured. We're able to go ahead, so we're going to get on the property as soon as we can. The bad news is I have four days to get construction equipment up there and start digging, or else I have to wait till October. And it looks like we won't be starting the construction till October. There is a striped turtle mating, that could be mating. I didn't know turtles mated that long, but it's an environment for striped turtle mating. So, yeah, yeah, so we're, we're in the process of going through our environmental studies and things of that sort, so if, we won't be able to start construction until the October timeframe, but hey, we've got permission to be on there. Another hurdle crossed. I feel like I'm getting through the desert now. I can actually see water, hopefully. And then the other thing is, is that DPW Director Dawn Talamo and myself have been meeting with the FE Everett Turnpike Widening and DOT. We've met on both the Wire Road Bridge and the Babuza Lake Road Bridge, and those will be going out to bid in June. Probably construction this fall-ish to start the construction on both of those bridges, which is a good sign. However, the widening from exit 11 to exit 12 is on hold, supposedly they ran out of money. Excuse me. So, from 11 and 12, they ran out of money, so they're waiting to put that out to bid, and that probably won't be put out to bid till October of '26 now.
They ran out of money?
Yeah, because the project, remember, is funded with turnpike money, and just because Merrimack took out all those tolls, that's why the project ran out of money. It's all our fault. And there is a gentleman from north of here who's been pushing for a long time for tolls in Merrimack, and he is on the Turnpike Committee to look at their funding now. So, we need to keep a very close eye of what comes out of the Turnpike Commission Report on how they're going to finance the turnpikes. So, it's going to be very interesting when it comes out, but the gentleman who's the chair is one that's always wanted to put a toll down by exit 10 in Merrimack across the whole highway and move it from Bedford down. So, I don't see that happening, but who knows if there might be another one put in because they say they're losing money. Because they say they're losing money.
Put it down exit one, where it was supposed to be.
Yeah, there's so many, there's so many miles or, that they have to be from a border. So it would have to, exit two was, I think, far enough, one exit away, right?
I think it's, I think they have to go three exits.
Yeah, I don't know, but there is infrastructure still at exit two.
And now that it's all over, it's not that they need the tunnels now.
Right. So uh, but that's, that's what's going on in town. I just want, uh, it's gonna be a very busy bridge construction season in uh, twenty-five, end of twenty-five, twenty-six. Because remember, our Route Three Bridge by Pineburg is supposed to be in the twenty-five, twenty-six era too. So uh, there's gonna be a lot of bridge construction in the, in a mile, mile, two-mile radius. So thank you.
Thanks, Paul. We have nothing on the consent agenda, so uh, our first item under all business, and our only item under all business, the council considered the Merrimack Fire Rescue's request to withdraw an additional thirty-one thousand from the ambulance capital reserve fund to cover the product and manufacturing increases to purchase the ambulance and related equipment. It's been, I was told, two and a half years since this was ordered.
Surprise, surprise.
Yes.
Hi, Jake.
Good evening, thank you. I am disappointed I have to do this, but this is where we're at.
Don't kill, don't kill the messenger.
No, exactly. Um, I continue to speak with our dealership for this truck almost weekly to try to determine when we're gonna see it. Uh, it's still not in production yet, but I was able to at least get a, a better cost estimate of what this truck's gonna cost. Uh, you'll see on the second page, the Excel spreadsheet that we put together for you. When we originally put the truck together, we had some expenses that we were able to do and take out of the costs for the truck. So the overall impact is certainly a lot less than it could have been. The major increases, uh, for the most part were on the Ford Cabin Chassis. Again, originally we were looking for a twenty twenty-two Cabin Chassis, well now we're gonna get a twenty twenty-five. So there's certainly been increases to cabs and chassis costs over the last three years. So that's something that the uh, ambulance production company could not absorb. They, for the most part, have absorbed their costs, so there's been no change to the cost of the truck itself, the box. But the Ford Cabin Chassis is definitely an increase. The stretcher mounting system that we use to uh, attach the stretcher to the vehicle itself, again, that's beyond A E V's control, so those costs went up. Again, like I said, we were able to purchase the radio equipment through a different grant program that we had. We'd already purchased the cardiac compression device. Um, we still need to leave about the ten thousand dollar mark to get this truck somewhat equipped as a reserve piece of equipment, because the objective was to have four ambulances in town so that we always had three. The fourth truck would be that spare truck. So if we were down a truck for a lo- a long period of time, we could put this reserve truck into service very quickly and still maintain three ambulances for the community. So the overall impact and adjustments to all this is thirty-one thousand to make the adjustment from what we requested about three years ago. If anybody's got any questions, certainly let me know.
Anybody have any questions?
When's the projected date?
I don't know.
And we ordered it two and a half years ago?
We did, yes. We were supposed to receive it this month, as a matter of fact. So I have been, like I said, on the phone with the dealership almost every week. And they have no idea when it's gonna be put in production. Last I got was, it's uh, being waited to be approved through engineering. I'm like, "Oh, okay." So I, I, I don't know, I don't know where it's at. I'm very frustrated, so I'm being polite.
Uh, Jennifer.
My only question is, I'm just assuming there's plenty of money in that capital reserve fund to cover that?
As far as I'm aware of, yes, we've, we've spoken to finance and the town manager and yeah, there's, the additional funding is there to cover the additional costs, yes.
Yep, thank you. Just wondering, from the time it goes into production till the time you actually receive it, did they give you any of that idea?
Historically, it only takes about two months to typically build the truck. It's not very long to build it. It was always a, you know, the, the waiting game till you got in line to produce it. Typically, back in the day, you could buy an ambulance and get it in about two hundred and ten working days. It doesn't take long to make the truck, but it was in the production line. So it doesn't take long to manufacture these things. We just gotta get when the manufacturing date is gonna start.
Thank you.
And I would say it'd be about two to three months before we saw it.
Pretty good. What's the pleasure of the council? You guys kill me bad.
I'm purposeful, I'm not trying not to.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve um, the withdrawal of uh, thirty-one thousand dollars from the ambulance capital reserve fund to cover the product slash manufacturing increases to purchase the ambulance and related equipment. Second.
Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the motion? Council will call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signed by by say and I.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? That's five zero zero, and McKenzie had stepped out for a moment.
Thank you, Wally, appreciate it, thank you.
Now we'll move down, uh, number two. In new businesses, the council considered appointing the following individuals to a couple of town committees pursuant to Article Four, Section Eight. It's, we have John Frichette, who had to step down as a full member of the Heritage Commission, and he's uh, asked to become an alternate member. Uh, Neil Anketell had been a planning board member until about a year ago, I think, that uh, was the timeframe. And he's desirous of coming back as a full member. And Francis Ferrari of uh, is, uh, wants to join the Town Center Committee as a full member. So I don't know if we want these all together or individually.
Usually we do it together.
Unless somebody wants to pull one out individually, you can do it all at once.
Move to approve the appointments as presented.
By Andy.
Second.
Seconded by Jennifer. Any further discussion on the motion? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signed by by say and I.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Five zero zero. Well, thanks to those for jumping on board.
Quick question, where does that leave us with planning board? Are we still short members?
We're still short. We have probably another full-time member and probably a couple of alternate positions that were short.
It's always nice visiting the chairman, uh, when we have those interviews of the planning board members. But uh, he's turned into a little bit of a Nelson Disco, I have to say, for longevity.
Yes.
All right. Item three under new business, the Media Division was gonna demonstrate a new web browser-based video-on-demand resource that complements Merrimack TV app.
So Nicholas Vali, the Media Coordinator, Service Coordinator, is here tonight. Um, Nick is so excited about this. He, he uh, he told me about it about maybe a month ago, and he's like, swore me to secrecy. May, took out my daughter's picture and my family's picture and made me swear that I wouldn't say a word.
You'll never see them again.
He's so excited to present this to the council tonight, and the town.
I should say we all are. I'm joined by my uh, staff, they're here tonight covering the meeting and uh, they're excited too. So Justin and Grace are also really proud of this and excited to share with the town council. So as uh, Town Manager said, I'm Nick LaValle, the Town of Merrimack's Media Services Coordinator. To give you an update on Merrimack TVs, first, starting with our app. Um, the Merrimack TV app, as most of you know, is available on mobile devices, tablets, and streaming devices. It is the best way to watch Merrimack TV. Um, both live and on-demand, our four cable channels stream on the, uh, live twenty-four seven. Every day, they look and sound great, and they're all in HD. Um, the app helps maintain Merrimack TV's relevancy in the media landscape. Um, just four years ago, the Town of Merrimack had seventy-three hundred traditional cable TV subscribers. Uh, since then, there, uh, it's fallen to fifty-two hundred homes. So there's less people who now have access to see us on cable TV. Um, we used to call this trend cord-cutting, but now it's just become normal. Uh, people subscribe to an internet service and then they download streaming apps. Uh, Merrimack TV is a streaming app, and we, you download it the same place that you download Netflix, Max, or Disney Plus. So this helps maintain our relevancy and what community media in Merrimack means. Um, since the app's launch in twenty twenty-three, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, it's been downloaded three thousand times, um, which I don't want to give away the towns or their numbers, but we have significantly more, dramatically more downloads and users with the Merrimack TV app than neighboring community media organizations. No shade, though. Uh, I believe our app is on a trajectory to eclipse the number of cable subscribers here in Merrimack. Um, and to complement our app, we launched a new web browser-based resource for video-on-demand content today. And we're calling it the Video Vault. And that wasn't AI, our own Grace Lemay did that animation. The Video Vault is accessible through MerrimackTV.com. Uh, you'll find it on the homepage, under Watch Merrimack TV. There are links that will drive you to download the app. You can also still watch the live stream on the website as well. But here's the Video Vault. Aesthetically, this looks just like the app. Uh, it's where you can find on-demand content from a desktop PC or laptop. So if you're familiar with the Merrimack TV app, this won't look foreign to you. Um, at the top of the Video Vault, there's the twelve most recent additions to the Video Vault. And then below that, there are playlists, uh, starting with the most popular, objectively is sports. Sorry, town council. Uh, below that, though, is our meeting coverage, local news, community channel shows, education channel shows, Merrimack music. Um, and each playlist, it's the four most recent in that category. So if we were to look at the sports, we could either pull up one of these four most recent games or we can click Show All, and there is two hundred and thirty-six uh, games available on the Vault. So this goes as far back as twenty-one for sports coverage. Um, the hockey team made it to the state championship this year, so you can click on that.
Check out more Warhawks action on the Merrimack TV app.
May off the glass, Farrell has to be parried.
Uh, there's also our Merrimack Moment Series, is local news. If you haven't seen this clip, I suggest checking out this clip from our, the Unified Basketball Game at the high school. Grace produced this segment, it was great. So the Video Vault is Merrimack TV's shift away from relying on YouTube to watch content through a web browser. Um, we wanna drive viewers to Merrimack TV as a platform that is free of advertising, logins, or data collection. The Video Vault achieves that, and it also creates efficiencies for our staff. After staff records a meeting or a game, it's exported to our server. And shortly after, it's now available in both the app and the Video Vault. So it's all in one place, it's not something we have to do secondary. Um, there's also a search bar too at the top. So if you wanted to find content from years ago, if you knew of a Outdoors with Bob show, uh, there is one where he visited the New Hampshire. Let me see if I've got this right. Um, The Health of New Hampshire Forest by Ariel Survey. If you click on that, and you, you don't see a video available to play, but there's this thumbnail. Just with an email or a phone call to us, we can make that piece of content available within a half hour or an hour. Um, as positively received as the app has been, a reoccurring comment has been residents wanting content on a web browser. So that's why we're doing this. Um, that's what they liked about YouTube, either because they're multitasking on a laptop or the ease of being engaged with the content, like re-watching game footage like we just did, or searching for an agenda item through a meeting. And this is something the Video Vault can do that YouTube just couldn't. So we had a school board meeting here just a couple of weeks ago. When I click on meeting coverage, and I click Show All, there are over thirteen hundred meetings that are either already on the Video Vault or could be made available on the Video Vault. I could go as far back as two thousand twenty-one and pull up a town council meeting. But if I were to click on a more recent school board meeting from just a few weeks ago, not only is the video available, but the agenda is off to the left as well. And if you're looking for something on the agenda, what could possibly make this better is chapters. So you click on chapters.
Welcome, I'd like to call to order the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Merrimack School Board Meeting. Will everyone stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
And I know that the Rotary presented something that night. If I could find it. Rotary. So I click on.
We have two exciting presentations tonight. The first one is the partnership with the Rotary and the school district. So I want to invite our presenters up for that presentation.
Trying to find the point, that's wonderful.
So all of our meetings beginning in twenty twenty-five have the agendas and chapter markers. We're playing a little bit of catch-up this week because we had the concert last night, but generally, the chapter markers are in there the fol- the, the following morning after a meeting has happened. The agendas are added as um, meetings are entered into our server. But we can watch a planning board from March fourth, and the chapter markers are there. We can watch a conservation meeting from February. Agenda's to the left, click on chapters, and it'll jump right to.
That moves us on to discussion and possible action, we go any other items of concern?
So that's the Video Vault. I wanna stress again that Merrimack TV wants to be the platform. We wanna drive residents and their families to Merrimack TV, not another video hosting site. Um, Merrimack TV keeps our community informed, engaged, and entertained, whether through our app or Video Vault now. We're your go-to source for meeting coverage, local sports and events, and more. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but uh, we're psyched to show this to you tonight.
That's spectacular. Uh, Nancy.
I don't have a question, I just wanna say, no wonder you and your team are winning awards. This is phenomenal, phenomenal. And especially for people that are not great tech-savvy people like me. This is, is, you know, this is wonderful. I mean, it, you have access to everything and it's simple. Um, so I, I'm, I'm really impressed, so thank you all for, for this, this is wonderful.
Jennifer.
I wanna say congratulations too, this is really great. And I love the, that you can jump to different points in the agenda. Um, my questions are, um, well, first, I think it's terrific because you can share videos from here the way you couldn't from the app, um, but that it complimentary to the app. Um, can people download videos from this?
People can't download videos. We could make that available, but we really wanna drive people to the site so that they can watch videos there. We do wanna kinda keep statistics. If someone were to download a video and share it elsewhere, now it's shared elsewhere. We'd like to have some idea of how many people are watching our channels, how, our content, and how often.
If somebody wanted a little snippet from a video, could they contact the media department and ask for that?
Absolutely.
Great, terrific, thank you.
One of the things that I just discovered recently, it, we say you can watch this from any streaming device. And so typically, when we were home in the living room and we were watching a planning board meeting or something, we would always pull it up on an iPad or, or something. Well, we just discovered you can actually install the Merrimack TV app if you have a smart TV and watch it directly from your TV. So took us a little while to figure that out. Like Nancy said, we're not the most tech-savvy people in the world, but you know, as long as you've got a TV that's connected to the internet, a smart TV, you can put the Merrimack app right on your TV and watch it just like you do Hulu, Netflix, or anything else, so.
We're on iPhone, Android, uh, iPad, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Apple TV devices. And sometimes I'm surprised too by TVs, maybe it's running an Android software or whatever it is, or the Google Play Store, and there's Merrimack TV. It's, it's like Andy said, you know, we want to be relevant. That's how people are watching content, they're downloading apps, and we don't wanna be any different.
You can isolate.
Yes, yeah, and, and instead of scrolling through, trying to get to the point, trying to remember where it was more precisely, it just saves a lot of time.
And again, if there is, if you do stumble on, you know, something that doesn't appear to have a video but has a thumbnail, our, you know, this tomorrow's Town Center Committee meeting hasn't happened yet, but we have it, you know, on the Video Vault. But if this were an Outdoors with Bob show with that thumbnail, but you can't click the video, right there is our phone number and our email address. You can contact us, let us know. I wanted to access this old episode of Cooking with Una, and chances are, we have it. It's just a click away, and it will be made available on the Vault in a half hour to an hour.
And Nick, when you make that available, does it remain on the site at that point? Or is it something that disappears and you would have to load it again?
It'll stay in the Video Vault. It will stay on the app.
So yeah, so it's just as you have not put it in yet, and so when that person asks for that, you do it.
If you see a thumbnail, it means that the video does exist on our server. So the video exists on the server. We just haven't made it available to the app or the Vault. It's literally a click and save.
And Nick, how easy is it to take something down if you need to?
Click.
So if there's something, the content that they need to take down, it's just a click of the mouse?
Sure. Or if.
Versus a YouTube, which is a long, drawn-out process to take something off of YouTube or Facebook.
Could you do me a favor since I wasn't prepared?
Sure.
Would you go back to the town webpage and show me where you click on? Does it actually say Vault?
If you go to.
I wasn't prepared.
It's through merrimactv.com. And we actually cleaned up.
So there's the Video Vault at the bottom.
It's right at the bottom. So we cleaned up the website this afternoon over on the left. You'll see our TV schedules. You'll see Watch Merrimack TV. And there's three links underneath that. Download the app, which will bring you to links to download the app. Or livestream from a web browser, which we've had for quite a while now, or Video Vault.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, like Nancy had pointed out just the ease of this. We wanted the aesthetic to look close to the app, so that if you've used the app, then you know how to use this. The one difference between the Video Vault and the app is where traditionally on the app is the ability to livestream. Our four channels are usually at the top. That, we don't have that capability to do that just yet, but that still exists on the website. So this slideshow is just the 12 most recent pieces of content available to the Video Vault.
Thank you.
It is an old picture. I've seen Bill Boyd there. He was the shiny and I share.
We'll have to update that.
Mackenzie, I'm sorry.
It's a historical photo.
I think this site is, it's just so great. As I'm thinking about it, too, like, we talk about transparency, too, with the voters. I'm thinking like games for sports on the weekends that are at schools, et cetera, or when people stop by the town hall. Is there like a flyer we can put with one of the things that they can scan on their phone that will bring them to this page that they can then take at home with them to try to get the word out more about all of the work that's being done?
Absolutely. Do you want to take this?
Yeah, I'll take this one. Remember those little flyers that we had? Once the vote is done on April 8th, we'll be switching over our flyer. And Nicholas has the seasonal, and Nicholas will have the code there that you can just click on, and it'll take you right to the page. That Councilor Jobin worked very hard to come up, and it's a seasonal, and this will be one of the seasonal items that we put on the bottom.
We also have banners that we hang up. We did that deliberative session. We usually use them for sports coverage. We should actually hang a banner up in the catwalk here for a couple of months.
Actually, you should hang it up on the other side, in where the town clerk is. Over there underneath their window. That's where we can hang it right now.
Sure.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you, and I want to thank my staff, Justin and Grace, for their support in this. We've been working on this for quite a while. And we're excited. We're excited to move away from YouTube and point people to the Video Vault. And we're going to continuously ask people to download the app. This is just a complementary experience through a web browser.
So there's another, before Nicholas goes, because he's too modest to say it. But there was a town to the north of us that is very progressive with their TV station and things of that sort. And when Nicholas showed them this, they were blown away. They're like, wow, we don't have that. How'd you do that? We want to do that. And they're one of the most progressive cable TV stations in the state, so something that we should be very proud of.
Not as progressive as.
No, we moved ahead of them now, but it's something that we should be very, very proud of.
Absolutely.
It's a lot of hard work and dedication of the staff as well with Nicholas to get this up and running, to see what we need.
Excellent. Thanks, Nick. Make sure they know we thanked him for all that. Big effort. All right, move along on new business. Item number four. Council to consider the acceptance of Whitetail Ridge along with the sidewalk, slope and drainage easements, the fire cistern, and to allow the town manager to sign any and all related documents. And here's Don to make this presentation. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm here tonight for road acceptance. Mr. Vaughn, this is Mr. Vaughn subdivision. He's in the back of the room, in case you have any questions for him. This was a 13-lot subdivision that was approved by the planning board back in 2018. And he then began constructing the road, and we had been out inspecting it ever since we had, he began the construction. So we followed the whole process all the way up through. You will note that he has a fire cistern, which is, I think, one of the first ones in town, or was the first one in town. I don't know if they have any more since, but that's in this area right here, and I followed that construction. And I actually went out a couple of weeks ago with one of the firefighters, and we checked that cistern, and it had lost less than one inch of water in four years. The last time I checked, it was 2021. So that's very good. It meets its requirements. So he has worked on all of the requirements that we've had for the road construction, the easements for slope, drainage, the open space, and whatnot. We also have a sidewalk that runs the whole length of the road, all the way up to the cul-de-sac. The road is 1,645 feet long, and it ends in a cul-de-sac at the far end. That's, well, basically, on this plan, you'll see that it was called Black Oak Road. The name got changed afterwards because there was another Black Oak or something very similar, and the fire marshal wanted to change it. That's why it's called Whitetail Ridge. But the plans had already been done, so they were already recorded. So we had a name change, but the subdivision is still the Oak Ridge subdivision from 2018. So he has sold all of the lots. All of them have been either built, or the last two or in, last couple are in construction. I think there might be an empty one, one or two up at the, towards the top, that were purchased by a neighbor or something of that nature. So anyway, we're asking for town acceptance so that we can take this over. He's met all those requirements. And he is working on getting the bond, the maintenance bond for the next two years. I don't have that in hand, but we still can do the acceptance. And then, once that comes in, it's in the bank's hands at this point, so it's a matter of just paperwork to get that through.
Does anybody have any questions? Could you do me a favor and just repeat that last thing as far as the bond not being complete?
So we have right now a performance bond, and I don't have that amount in front of me. But he had a couple of reductions through the years. As he completed certain points, we were able to reduce the bond. We keep, that's a performance bond, so as he's constructing it, we make sure we have enough money left in that bond to be able to finish the road should he have walked away. A maintenance bond is for the next two years. So if there is something wrong with the road physically, so it's not due to wear and tear, but if there was a problem with the catch basin, all of a sudden it collapsed or something of that nature, the concrete that was making it was not good, that would be something we would call back on the maintenance bond, something of that nature. If the cistern decided it was going to have a leak or something in it for the next two years, we would be watching, watching that also. That type of thing, it covers that. It doesn't cover the normal wear and tear on the road itself.
I just, I was writing a note to myself and didn't hear it, so that's why I had to ask you to repeat it.
Right. So he's, his bank has been, he's working on it with his bank to be able to get that note. He just doesn't have it in hand for tonight. But that's, we can wait until all of that paperwork comes in, and then we can sign off on the deeds. So I went through, each one of these lots has a separate deed for slope, for drainage, for whatever it happens to be. I went through each one of those deeds for all of the lots. They're all in order. Most of them were done when the subdivision was recorded. They were recorded. There were a few outstanding ones. And I made sure that we got all of the deeds that were required and the road deed, because that's important in the future, to know that we actually own the road itself, the 50-foot wide section. I have those new deeds. They were in your packet, but all of the rest of them have been recorded, and I had them checked by the town attorney, so they're happy with all of that.
Nancy?
I'd like to make a motion if we're ready. I'd like to move the acceptance of Whitetail Ridge along with the sidewalk, slope, and drainage easements, the fire cistern, and to allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
A motion by Nancy Arden, seconded by Andy. Is any further discussion? And I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, moving along. Item five, under new business, council to consider the request to withdraw $26,571.30 from the Computer Capital Reserve Fund for the replacement of the current server infrastructure, as the current server infrastructure is approaching its end of warranty period, which is in April of 2025. John, how are you?
So Jonathan, our IT coordinator is here to discuss with the Town Council tonight, server replacements. Jonathan's been going through a lot of our systems and servers and switches and things of that sort, so this continues to get the town of Merrimack moved forward. We had a conversation today, and basically I said, we used to crawl, and now we're at least walking, and soon we'll be running with some of these upgrades and things of that sort, so we'll be on a better schedule than, you know, having to rush into changes because it's end of life all the time. So Jonathan, take it away.
Yeah, so we're just assessing the stuff, which we do every year constantly. When I came on board here, there was quite a big hurdle to jump over. We've made a lot of progress moving forward. The current server replacement that we're looking at is, we have an option. We could extend the warranty on three-year-old equipment, or we could replace it with the increased tariffs that everybody's hearing about. They're talking 40% increases on hardware over the next six months. And even HP has come back on the original quote, and they're kind of, you know, they want to, oh, if you don't buy it right away, we're going to assess the tariffs. Those are supposed to go in effect on 3/31. That's why I wanted to bring this forward right away, because I can't see us, you know, spending 40% more, something that's inevitable that we have to do, you know?
Jonathan, I chatted with Paul about it. We, from what I understand, Fidelity, which had a mountain of servers, I was in there years ago and saw this room that was packed with server racks, you know, tons of them. I've been told that they now use the cloud. Is there a reason we're not anticipating that or contemplating that?
Yeah, so this is something we've been ongoing and working towards, but the costs are super expensive. So just to give you an idea, we're looking at a $26,000 purchase. If we go into the cloud, two of our applications alone would be about 84 grand a year, and then the rest of the infrastructure would be between assessment from a few different cloud providers, AWF and Microsoft, between 12,000 and 20,000 on top of that. It's about 250 a year, give or take, you know, rough estimate. So this is a stepping stone to get us to the next point as we trim down assessed systems where we might be able to find an efficiency in the middle on the next upgrade window. So that's why I'm bringing it forward this way now.
And Fidelity can afford it. We can't.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm shocked to hear that. I always assumed, you know, bad thing to do. I get it, but I always imagined.
Yeah, so one thing with this cloud that everybody should understand, and this is just a knowledge base for everyone, is the cloud is somebody else's data center. So what that means is that capital equipment is going in the data center when we transition into it. So we're making an investment. We don't own the equipment. And once we go into that structure, it's just that reoccurring component that we're paying. So we're paying a lease for the equipment and the usage of equipment and the links and stuff like that. So it's, in a lot of cases at this size footprint of the town, it's counterproductive at this stage. But there are other reasons why, like, keeping in the envelope kind of helps, because we have a lot of fiber connectivity between our buildings, so we can maintain our communications in the envelope rather than putting it out somewhere outside of our control. Doesn't mean it's better, because both have equal security risks now. The cyber criminals are getting smarter and more aggressive each day.
Sure.
Hopefully that helps.
Good question.
No, thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, no.
I never would have asked.
I figured it was going to come up.
He's smart.
Did you give him a heads up? Now, we chat about it. He says, I don't know. All right. Does anybody have anything of Jonathan? Paul?
Yes, I just want to let the council know that there is approximately $44,000 in this capital reserve. And to answer your question earlier, I finally got my report up, the ambulance capital reserve has $566,000 in it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, what's the pleasure?
So you only need the 26. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw $26,571.30 from the Computer Capital Reserve Fund for the replacement of the current server infrastructure. And authorize town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
Second.
This is my hand. It's seconded by Jennifer. Nancy. Nancy Murphy. Is there any further discussion? And actually, before I do call questions, do you have something, Nancy?
No.
No. Paul, did we talk about the old stuff, the old equipment?
Yeah, we're going to recycle the old servers and use those for our repetitive backups. So that's a plan of Jonathan, too, to start looking at reusing some of this stuff in case of disaster recovery, because they're still good. They're just maybe out of warranty for the day-to-day stuff. But in case of emergency, we can always pull one back and say, and load it up real quick.
Yeah, the goal is to have a 24-hour Delta system with this old equipment, which we won't rely on day-to-day, but in the event of a ransomware attack, we could spool up 24 hours near instantaneously, probably within two hours. And that's what I'm going to repurpose it for, because most companies would have like a fidelity, you know, because I've built these infrastructures. So you'd have your primary data center or secondary data center, and those are mirrored to each other. We're taking it on a smaller scale, and we're going to have a mirror, a smaller scale of what these larger entities are doing with some old equipment that we already own.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. There's nothing further? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The chief, I should have consolidated these for the chief.
I know. I didn't even realize.
Didn't think about it till now. Sorry, chief.
He wanted to be here. He likes hanging out with us. He said it to me the other day.
So number six, under new business, the council to consider the Merrimack Fire Rescue Request to withdraw up to $218,000 from the ambulance equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of three cardiac monitors, refurbish two cardiac monitors, mounting equipment, and any other related equipment or cost associated with that.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been here, so I don't mind waiting my turn. Everybody has to follow the lead, so we're okay with this.
So yeah, the first request I have for you tonight is for the replacement and
So, yeah, the first request I have for you tonight is for the replacement and upgrade of our cardiac monitors. Um you guys have information that the public may not be able to see, so I thought I'd put some images on the screen here, so the public can understand exactly what it is that we're looking to purchase and we can go over the concept of what we're trying to accomplish. So currently our monitors are uh almost twenty years, or ten years of age and they're aging out um because we've had them for so long. We have had a lot of uh issues with them and Zoll has been great at coming out and making the repairs and keeping our equipment operating and functioning. However, that can't sustain over time. And for our service, being a paramedic level service and an advanced EMT provider service, these are critical components for us to have in order for us to diagnose and help patients when we're out in the field. So the cardiac monitor is the key piece for truly paramedics. Um they get to understand what it is that your heart is beating and what it's telling us. Do you have a problem, do you not have a problem? Depending upon the problem, um STEMI's in specific, where you're having a, a blockage in your heart, we can diagnose that and when we communicate with the hospital, we can get you seen immediately at a cardiac cath lab, so that you can have stents put in immediately, based on what we see on the field, so there's no delay. Um for those cardiac arrest victims, um we can see what rhythms they're in and if it's a shockable rhythm, we can deliver shocks to hopefully regenerate the heart and get it back at a rhythm that works for the human body. Um sometimes the heart gets out of sync and with these cardiac devices, we have the ability to apply electricity and capture control of the electrical activity of the heart to take it away from its heart not operating correctly and we can kinda bring it in line to make it function more efficiently. So with the request I have before you tonight is we're looking to purchase three new machines. The three new machines would go on the three ambulances. They're the latest and greatest technology, uh providing our paramedics with the best equipment that we can provide them to provide excellent patient care. Uh we'd like to take two of our older devices, um Zoll is willing to take them back and go through them completely, so they'd be refurbished pieces of equipment and then also upgraded to mirror the equipment that would be on the three primary trucks. Um I asked about the ability to, well, can we just refurbish the equipment that we have and keep those primary? And the, the recommendation was no. Um refurbished equipment, while it's still in good working order, it's still a ten-year-old piece of equipment. Um the use that we want to put it on is, uh we want to put them on two of our engines, so that they're used as ancillary pieces of equipment and not primary pieces of equipment. Uh again, I know it's uh Councilor Ro- Rothaus has said before, it's kind of confusing how we operate when we send equipment out around town and what goes and what doesn't go, um based on our staffing for the day and how we try to cover the town. So our concept is that the first ambulance call that the community gets, the truck will come out of Central Station, which is ambulance one. If it's in the area where Station Two is, the engine from that station would go and respond. And if we had a cardiac monitor on the engine, the engine's obviously gonna get there faster than the ambulance. They could start immediate care right away, transfer the care when the ambulance arrives and then the engine could go back into service and still cover that area of town. Not, you'd lea- you know, ban in that area if we used the ambulance that's in that station, that ambulance would disappear, we wouldn't get it back for about an hour or two. Whereas our concept is, the ambulance from Station One can leave, we still have more people at Station One and Station Two folks can go back to Station Two and provide that coverage. The other thing that happens at times is sometimes all three of our trucks are busy and we get a fourth ambulance call and now we're relying on mutual aid. So if we had one of these cardiac devices on our engines, those guys could provide, again, that high level of care. When we first purchased cardiac monitors, we didn't have very many advanced EMTs. Um today we have quite a few advanced EMTs that certainly could take advantage of this equipment. So it's a great opportunity for us to provide better care more consistently than we could before. So that's why you have the uh request before you tonight. Uh the total cost pro- uh projection that we're looking for, for this particular project is about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that any of you have.
It, it, that does include three years' service, right?
Correct.
And does that include the rehabbing of the old ones?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It also includes training, 'cause uh when we were uh demoing these devices, uh a lot of the talk when we were working with the uh demo provider was, we didn't understand that some of the equipment that we own could do this. This equipment was purchased so long ago that some of those unique opportunities that the equipment can provide were not passed on, 'cause it's not a frequent thing that they would do. So with the turnover of people, some of those unique opportunities that the equipment can provide, we've lost. So we're gonna retrain all of our staff um on how these new pieces of equipment will work, so the training is also included with this purchase price, which I think is just amazing that we can do all of this and, and be a much better provider than we are today.
Can I assume that this equipment can communicate to the hospitals?
Yes, if need be, uh.
'Cause the present, present ones do, right?
The present ones do as well, yep, absolutely. Yep, and with our uh upgrades to our equipment in the ambulances, we have a much better, cleaner connection
Connection.
to send uh diagnosis strips and whatever else they want to receive from these devices, we can send it to the hospitals.
I'm sure the technology in ten years has gotta be enhanced.
It's amazing.
In here.
Uh the, ju- the demo that we saw for the new piece of equipment is just, it's just amazing. It's gonna be a huge upgrade for us, really, really is.
Good, 'cause I'm getting older. Andy?
Uh I, just to disconnect, the, the quote that's in our packets, right at two hundred and eight thousand? We're requesting two eighteen.
Yes, the additional dollars are for uh mounting equipment to mount these new devices in the trucks. The current devices we have now are a little bit different than the new devices, so we've put in extra dollars to get mounting equipment and any other ancillary pieces that we might need to properly put these things in place. And then we've never had them on the engines, so there might be some other costs that we might incur to get these things on the engines.
Yep.
I guess just the same question for Paul, is there, we have plenty to cover that in the capital reserve fund.
I'm sorry, yes, after the uh board action on old business, number one, um there's, there would now be five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the ambulance capital reserve fund.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing further? Accept the motion?
I'll make a motion. To um withdraw up to two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from the ambulance equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of three cardiac monitors, refurbish two cardiac monitors, mounting equipment and any other related equipment or cost.
And?
Oh, and authorize town manager to sign any uh paperwork. And I'll make a second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Mackenzie. Any further discussion on your motion? See none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. All right, chief, we'll move on to number seven of new business. Council to consider the paramedic fire rescues request to withdraw up to twenty-five thousand dollars from the fire equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of thermal imaging cameras, mounting equipment and any other related equipment or costs.
Thank you. Uh, yep, so this one is for thermal imaging equipment. Um this equipment is invaluable for firefighters to have in their hands. Um as most of you know, and I'm sure the public understands, that the environment that we may need to enter is not free and clear like a, a normal day. It's usually very smoky, dark, hot environment that you really can't see your face and, uh your hand in front of your face. So these pieces of equipment are huge for us to have, especially if we're being told there are still victims in the building that we need to try to locate. The other unique pe- uh piece for these uh pieces of equipment is there might be opportunities for us to make a better attack and a quicker attack to get to the seat of the fire where it actually is and direct people exactly where they need to go. Um this request is looking for two different types of equipment. So the first one is this image at the top. This is the primary piece of equipment that the officer in charge would have. It gives them a little more detail and understanding of what it is that they're looking at. Um it's about eleven inches tall, which is about the size of a piece of paper, um and the other dimensions are there as well. The second device that you see is a more personal device, so that each of the firefighters that are on duty, that particular shift, will have these pieces of equipment on them personally. So if they need additional information or understand their surroundings, they will have the opportunity to have it up, to look at through a thermal image or what is actually going on around them. Some of the images that um you get to see through some of these things, especially in this area here, this obviously is where the seat of the fire is, but you can see some objects over here that are obviously much cooler. This looks like there's a door here, so if you needed to make an exit, you would know where the door is. This one here is an exterior view, so you can obviously see there's a fire in the attic space uh on the edge of the home. So again, these, these pieces of equipment are truly invaluable for us to have and this is just another image of what firefighters would look like inside. And again, everything provides a heat signature, so it's very easy for us to determine where hotter things are than others. Especially the thing that I always try to show people is this, this is the air cylinder that the firefighter wears. It's black, 'cause the air is usually cooler, so it comes out black. So the, the total cost for this particular project, purchasing three of the better information cameras for our two primary engines and our new aerial truck and eight personal devices uh is a total of twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And that would also allow us to purchase mounting brackets and any other pieces of equipment to, you know, properly get these things uh where they need to be on the apparatus. And again, any questions that anybody has, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions.
Can I ask a silly question? Not that, why not, oh, we're silly. All right. I probably, anyway, I'll just say it.
Say the question.
Okay, if you're inside the fire
Hmm?
and you're holding it, if it's so smoky, is it that bright that you can see it?
Yes, depending upon the, the equipment that you purchase, you will see images just as clear as this. Now again, there's gonna be that layer of smoke between you, but the screen image um allows you to see.
Will be that much brighter, okay.
And the key thing that we teach our folks is, um this is a cheat. So you should always rely on your senses and always rely on what you're tactilely feeling. This gives you a lot of information and you can get into trouble very quickly by relying on this. If you cheat too much, you will find yourself in trouble. You know, always know where you are in the building, always keep a, you know, hand to the wall or some object that you know how you got in, so you can get yourself back out. This is a great tool, but it's not the answer.
You gotta follow the procedure, that's why.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
So wasn't that silly, was it?
No.
Nope.
I would never think that.
Yes, this is.
Not that you admit.
So chief, this, um, I have no problem with this and the reserve, you know, the fund that we're taking it from, but I didn't know if the Abbey Griffin Fund might have been used for something like this.
This particular, again, this, we're looking at over twenty-one thousand dollars. The Abbey Griffin Fund, we've typically only got around eleven, twelve thousand, so.
And Abbey's really only used for stuff that we do not budget for. These cameras, we have budgeted for.
These were in the plan, we've been planning on.
Yeah, we've been planning on budgeting for this, in the capital improvement plan.
Yep. I should have started the question that way, thanks. Paul?
Because I know I'm gonna be asked, the amount in the capital reserve for the fire equipment is one million and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
It's a close call, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I, I need to, a million dollars seems like a lot of money.
Oh, I understand.
We have a ladder, not a ladder truck, we already bought that, thank God.
Yes.
We have an engine at eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Correct.
That was ordered, so.
I understand.
That million is cash in hand now, that is not taken out. We have about two hundred thousand dollars in this capital reserve fund. But this twenty-five thousand dollars is still, we still have pretty much. But I don't want people at home thinking, oh, we got a million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
It's earmarked.
That's, it's encumbered.
So, uh Nancy, please.
I'd like to make a motion uh to withdraw up to twenty-five thousand dollars from the fire equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of thermal imaging cameras, mounting equipment and any other related equipment and costs. Um and authorize the town manager to sign any uh related documentation.
Second. Second.
I think it was Jennifer, so we're going, it's a motion by Nancy Murphy, second by Jennifer. Any further discussion on the motion? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Thanks, chief.
Councilors, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Good training, chief.
All right, eight under new business, this was a lengthy one, I didn't realize.
No, it shouldn't be a lengthy one, we've already been through.
This, we, yes, we have had this discussion, the, the consideration of recommended changes to the personnel policy manual. Paul and Sharon are here.
Now we have, is this the second time or third discussion?
This is the first official discussion? We had a uh, a meeting with the, we had the meeting with the legal counsel, because there was a lot of legal changes that happened because of laws and regulations with the federal government. And we also had a part of this policy brought forward to the town council, which is the pay plan, the new pay plan for non-union employees with the wage and grade.
Right.
We have combined all of this and now we're bringing forward this personnel policy forward and if I can go over there, I can give you a little bit.
With all those changes?
Yes.
Okay. It just, it looked familiar, that's all.
Yes.
It did look familiar, I think, oh.
Yeah, um, so first things first is that the last time that I think the plan was fully, fully vetted was probably back in two thousand and nine. Two thousand and ten was the last full rewrite that we had of the plan. Um we've been operating underneath federal laws that have changed and state laws that have changed. We have changed those, even though they might have not been in the personnel policy. We had to act and continue to progress using those, those laws. So first thing we did is we cleared up, you know, typos, text, um updates of uh other information as went through that is needed to be updated. And Sharon's gonna go through, there's an extensive list here of, of just the summary of changes, which is, I believe, six pages long. We're not gonna read every change that we did.
Please don't.
Well, it all depends. We got some time now that, we're ahead of schedule. No, we, we have summarized just the major changes that have gone through, but just want people to know at home that there are some things that have changed. This has been put on the website already um during the meeting minutes, so if people are interested to see what has changed. We're gonna highlight the major changes, actually Sharon's gonna be doing all the talk.
Good, and I'm gonna keep quiet now. Oh, I feel better now.
Thank you. Uh in chapter one, under Personnel Administration, we updated the Protected Class List um nondiscrimination paragraph and areas throughout the contr- the uh personnel policy. The definitions in the beginning of the personnel policy were also updated and some of them were clarified to make sure people understood them. We didn't add any new definitions. Under chapter two, Fair Treatment of Employees, we renamed the Americans with Disabilities Act paragraph to the Disability and Pregnancy Accommodation Policy. And this is because there's a new federal Pregnant Workers Act that requires us to provide reasonable accommodations for known limitations related to pregnancy and childbirth um and related medical conditions. No changes in chapter three. Chapter four, Compensation Plan, um the pay adjustments for performance-based pay, that's all been updated in this co- in this policy. And then there's a new um provision for holiday and vacation time to, that's wor- uh not worked, but paid to count towards overtime. There's also an increase for our call-in pay. We used to pay two hours at the overtime rate to call people into work, we're changing that to three.
One of, one of the things we also did with, with this when we reviewed it is try to make it consistent throughout the whole town. So we had some unions that had three hours, non-union might have been at two. Some unions might have been including vacation and holiday pay. Non-union was no, that doesn't include towards overtime pay. So we tried to make it as consistent as throughout town as possible.
We changed the paragraph or the, the section, um Policy Regarding Payroll Deductions. And we, so we changed the name of that and we also had it rewritten to comply with current law, so you'll see the entire section's been rewritten. It's the same information, it's just complies specifically with the law and uses more of the language from the law. In chapter five, Recruitment, we changed a lot of the language to indicate that we now have an online applicant tracking program that we've been using. Um and then there's a new section which would allow, um currently, if we want to post something internally only, it doesn't happen all the time, but when we do get approval to do that, um we have a provision here for the town manager to be able to consider full or part-time former employees as an internal candidate um before opening up to the public. This would be cases where people are already maybe trained or familiar with the town and our processes. And then under Relatives or nepotism, we expanded the language in that con- in that part of the policy um to clear. um to clarify um the regulations that we have. Uh, part of it talks about um a relative can't be in the direct line of authority. They cannot initiate or participate in decisions that would directly benefit a relative. Chapter six is Standards of Conduct, Disciplinary Action. We added um a stipulation for unlawful electioneering, the attorney had suggested that we add that, that in public employees can't electioneer. We addressed acceptance of discounts, our employees have asked us, we've had companies drop off discount cards for all the employees, hey, put this in your lunchroom. And we've always had questions, should we accept these or not? So now we've clarified in there that it's okay to do that as long as it's available to all. Um, interaction with public officials, um that's in regard to employees approaching counselors. Um, public employees are allowed in their individual capacity to speak on matters that are related to the government. RSA ninety-one E says that, so we've included that in the policy.
However, town counselors, you still have the non-interference clause. So they can bring something to you to talk to you about it, it's just you can't give direction, you have to give direction through the town manager to make change. You can't say, yep, that's a great idea, let's do it, you have to go through the town manager and make change. You can let, because of the RSA ninety-eight E, they're allowed to go to the town council as a resident to bring up issues or concerns or items, oh, items of public concern.
Not related to being an employee?
No, they can do it even as related to an employee, but you remember that the town council underneath the town charter, there's a non-interference clause. So you can't direct them to take action or not to take action on that.
But that's always been explained to me differently.
Well, I think we've had the conversation in the past and it's, it was, my, my thought was that if it was knowledge that they had directly because of their employment, it would be different than if they're saying, we don't have enough.
RSA ninety-eight E has changed that.
Okay, so the point is, I understand you cannot say, I'm going to work on it to, but you can listen and communicate that to you.
Correct.
Okay, which is different than previously.
Right, previously it was like, they can talk to you about everything, don't talk to you about that.
Having spoken to them basically was interpreted as interfering.
Correct.
And that's no longer true.
Right, they can talk to you, you just can't give them direction, you, it all has to go through the town manager.
Which is appropriate, okay, that's different than pre.
Right, and, and really, you can say to them, too, I'm all set, I know everything, you know, I'm aware of everything that's going on. Talk to your whatever.
But the point is that I have a choice now, before I didn't feel I had a choice.
Right.
And the, the Policy Manual does still say that employees should go through their chain of command for items that their supervisors can deal with.
Is that, have you been through appropriate chain?
Right.
And if the answer is no, then I'm not gonna talk to you, if you have, that's a whole different issue.
Well.
Go ahead, it's worth the discussion.
No, 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 and fair enough, but as, as a counselor, I, I, I would take the input, but that would be the extent of it because I'm really finding it an awkward position to be in when I have a town manager, that's his duty.
That's right, I agree.
My duty is not personnel or any of that stuff, so that's my own personal decision for this policy.
And that's where you have to be careful.
And, and we've had a long discussion with the attorney over this on this subject matter, oh, before we put it in. It was their recommendation that that's, because in RSA ninety-eight E, that's the interpretation, that you cannot stymie, meaning I cannot stymie individuals or employees who wanna talk to the town council. But the question would or could be asked by the council, did you go through your chain of command?
See, that's the big conflict, right out of the gate, that's a conflict in the legislation, the statute requires if you have a town charter form of governance, you have to have a non-interference clause in there. And so we have that, they haven't updated the law then, so there's a conflict in my estimation.
Okay.
Not to bore you with that.
No, but that's the conflict, because I'm hearing what was and what is, and that's why I brought the question up.
All right.
Maybe we need some clarification in the future.
Right, and, and that's the other thing, we can always further clarify that.
Right.
Get a written opinion of what, how this interacts with our charter. We can get that.
It is required by statute.
Items of public concern regarding the government and its operations, so that's.
That's pretty broad.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
There's another uh new item, limitation on the use of town property, and this is in regard to employees soliciting the public to, to buy something or donate to something um on our property type of thing.
Yeah, this isn't the um food drives that we do. Um, this does not, you know, like Girl Scout cookies, if an employee, if I, Sharon's daughter's in Girl Scouts and she says, hey, anybody who wants my Girl Scout cookies, sign up. This is, hey, um, hey, we're doing X, Y, Z, come to the firehouse to buy X, Y, Z, or come to the police station, or come to DPW to purchase a ticket or things of that sort, that's what this is really in, in favor of. It's not, it's not things that we do across all town divisions, it's specific and trying to sell items to the public um that, uh, from the town.
There's a new item added uh for paragraph under Grievance Procedure, it just tells the employees to go to their immediate supervisor and talk about the issue um and get an answer there prior to filing a grievance. Um, we don't have formal grievances with non-union employees anyway, I can't remember the last time we did. Um, they can, um, but we don't get a lot of them, but, and I think they do go to their immediate supervisors and things are handled pretty good there, so that's just um something that's in the union contracts and it works really well. Um, and it gives them some direction when something's going on, they'll be able to look at the policy and say, okay, I'm gonna start here. Moving on to Separations from Employment, chapter seven, we basically updated it to reflect our current practice. It had been years since the policy, so that's, that's just been updated. Under Current Benefits, we did update the waiting period for health and dental insurance to become effective upon hire. Um, it is now uh put in there as the first of the month instead of the first of the month after thirty days of service. Um, in some case, it could be almost sixty days before someone gets insurance and it's just not, um, it's not competitive anymore. Disability Insurance and Workers' Compensation sections, um and throughout this Policy Manual, we had some changes made because there was new law that did, that did not allow employers to require employees to use their accrued paid leave to supplement if they are um on an FMLA leave and also qualify for disability benefits or workers' comp benefits. So we just changed the language in there to comply with that law. Um, chapter nine, Time Away From Work and Other Benefits, the bene, uh bene, bereavement leave, we have changed this in several contracts. We're trying to make it uh more flexible for employees. People no longer have services three days after someone passes away, sometimes there's quite a delay. So um it now allows them for to, for them to say, hey, uh, I do wanna take bereavement leave, but I wanna take it later. And then throughout the Policy Manual, we also went through to try to um clarify the intended use of each type of leave. Sometimes employees will ask or departments will approve leave for different, i- it just was getting different with different departments and we wanna make sure that the employees are treated the same across the board, so we just added some language for that. And then there is a transition of personal leave, currently, um people's personal leave accrues on their annual, uh, on their anniversary. So every employee, we have to keep track of their anniversary and make sure they get their personal leave every year. We wanna trans every, transition everyone to a fiscal year, that way they all get their personal leave at the same time, um and it's easier to manage. Moving on, there is a new policy, Paid Military Leave Policy. We have always had a two-week period where the town would make up the difference between um the employee's military leave and the town's uh pay. We have had a lot of people asking about military leave um and whether we could have paid leave for at least the two-week training period that they do. Sometimes um we have new employees and um they don't have any leave built up. And so um this just gives them an opportunity to have at least the two-week training period um as a paid leave. Vacation Maximum Approve, Accruals, um we were, we put in for, there is a maximum of four-hundred-and-eighty hours, so I'm sorry, it's four-hundred, four-hundred hours maximum um for someone to accrue vacation. And um right now, as it gets to that four-hundred, it's wiped away and you can't accrue anything past that. We're recommending to allow the accruals to build for the entire year as long as they come down to the maximum before the end of the fiscal year. If they don't, then those, those disappear and they're not available.
Like four-fifty, but by the end of the year, they have to be.
Yes, and we also put in stipulations that it's not paid out, um if it's over when someone leaves, that portion will not be paid out. It is paid out at the max four-hundred.
And that, that really is, you know, you get the phone call, hey, I'm almost up to my accrual max, I gotta burn a day, so I'm taking Friday off and, you know, couldn't, might not be beneficial for the town for them to take the Friday off, but you don't wanna say to the gentleman or lady that you can't take it off, you're gonna lose your leave. Well, this will allow more flexibility in scheduling, that they can schedule and take time off and actually plan to take a day off in the, you know, and uh be able to use it for vacation or, but always be at that maximum by the year end. Yep, um, a new, uh, a new section is a Special Award Day. Uh, this gives me the ability to recognize performance above and beyond uh job expectations by giving a special award day. The special award day would be one day off with pay. Um, this, I really saw a need for this coming out of COVID and being through COVID because we had some employees who really stepped up during COVID and they kept departments afloat during the COVID time period and it was like, okay, thanks a lot. Thanks for doing that kind of a pat on the back, this way, if we had this in place, it'd be like, hey, thanks for doing this, you kept this department afloat. Without you, we wouldn't have been able to get through this period of COVID or this period. Here's a special day off, you have so many months to use it um as a thank you to doing that. It's just trying to reward employees for going above and beyond and, and showing them that they are, are welcomed and they are appreciated for going above and beyond their duties.
We already have a maternity leave uh policy uh in, but we have added to that, there is a new Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, so we did have to add some language in there. And also a new law in New Hampshire, effective seven-one-twenty-five, we have to provide sufficient space and reasonable breaks for anyone, any nursing employees who want to express milk during work hours. Uh, we have added that there and we are working on a room, um, the room is not gonna be just for that. We're gonna uh have a room for employees who maybe have an online um meeting with their doctor or um have to call the school about their child or take a call, something like that. So they'll be able to call and say, I need the room, can I, is it scheduled, can I have it? And so I think people will appreciate that a lot.
And then we have a room specific here at Town Hall, but like in other outside buildings, we have to make reasonable accommodations. So there might not be a room in the highway garage, for instance, but there'll be a reasonable accommodation if somebody does come and work and say, I need to do X, Y, Z, we're gonna try to make reasonable accommodations in, into a facility. So it might not be a room in every individual facility, that's, that's the room, it's for reasonable accommodations.
We'll find a place.
Make arrangements.
That's, that's sufficient, it needs to be near a bathroom and, and um near water and stuff like that, but we'll find if, we'll find a place. Moving on, Appendix A, so that was already approved, the new pay plan was already approved, but we did move around some of the positions that were in there, we realized that may have not been in the best spot. So we did move some, and then there was um a special officer position that we um put in there, former full-time special officer, who would be a certified police officer, coming in if we chose to hire them for specific duties.
Right, and, and we're planning on bringing, we will put it in there because we're planning on bringing that forward to the town council to explain what this special full-time police officer would be doing. Um, so it's.
In the future.
In the future, you know, we uh, it's hard when gentlemen and ladies leave with twenty, thirty years of experience and they just retired, but, you know, they still can help out the town and the special need uh that we might have. And they don't wanna work forty hours, but they might wanna pick up, you know, a four-hour shift to help us out or, or a detail shift or, or uh things of that sort. But as always, everything will go through our full-time employees first and then we'd call on the specials. Kinda like for those that were around about ten years ago, we used to have a special police force. It'd be kinda similar to that, we'd ask all the full-time employees first and then we move on and call in the specials to, to come, we call them specials, but, to help them, uh, to help out, supplement the police force.
And we didn't remove the special officers um from our pay scale that aren't certified officers, just in case they want to bring back their special officers, they have a place on the pay scale.
In case, you know, policing in America changes and swings back to way it used to be where people wanted to go into the profession and we used to have a list of individuals, yeah, so that's why.
Uh, last couple items, Appendix D, the Conditional Offer Form, the attorney suggested some changes to that, so we made some changes and it also um includes a requirement to complete the I-nine. We've always had the employee uh prove that they can work in the United States, but now it's in the conditional offer that says that they must uh be able to do that. Um, and then the Acceptable Use Policy, um, we added language to address rules regarding employees posting on town social media pages. And it restricts the use of the town seal also by employees on personal social media pages or anyone else, you know, but this is an employee policy. Um, and then um it does refer to the requirement to comply with the town's uh upcoming social media policy, so that's something that Paul and I are gonna look at um bringing forward.
Any questions besides um RSA ninety-eight dash E that I have to get an attorney clarification on?
You just need a motion for acceptance?
That is correct.
So moved.
Second.
Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer. Any discussion?
A lot of work, thank you.
It was, it was a huge undertaking, Sharon, uh, Sharon really worked hard in this, this been going on for about a year. I won't tell you how many revisions we went through and how many trees we killed through getting through these revisions, but it was a huge undertaking. Like I said, last time I was really looked at was two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, so it's well overdue.
I'm very happy about it because now if we have a change, it's just a small change to bring forward, here's a paragraph we need to change.
And there's been a lot of changes, um.
Yeah.
Special award thing, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Touche.
So uh, we had a motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer, is there any further discussion on the motion? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, five, six zero zero. Thanks, guys, thanks, Sharon. All right, nine under new business, council considered recommended changes to chapter one-seventy-eight, Taxation of the Town Code pursuant to Charter Article Five.
Thank you, um, back in uh February, we had a uh discussion about um our exemption for the elderly. And when we looked at the exemption for the elderly, um, we saw that our um asset limit was one of the best, that two-hundred thousand dollars for asset limit. Um, also, we saw that our um income limit of.
Um, also, we saw that our, um, income limit of forty-five thousand for a single married sixty thousand was right in the middle of surrounding communities. Um, what, uh, we did see is that our exemption amount off the appraisal amount of your home, or assessed value of your home, we were lacking. We were low on every category. We were either tied for the lowest or the second lowest, uh, out of the seven, including ourselves, seven, uh, area, including ourselves, and the municipalities I used was Derry, Bedford, Amherst, Salem, Hudson, London Derry, and Merrimack to do the comparison factor. Um, right as of two, April of two thousand twenty-four, we had a hundred and seventy-nine exemptions for elderly, um, the biggest category being the eighty-plus at, uh, ninety-eight. The average bill prior to the exemption for these categories was roughly between fifty-six-hundred and almost six thousand dollars. After the exemption, it was from around three thousand dollars up to forty-one hundred dollars, um, which was a difference of a, anywhere from seventeen hundred, almost eighteen hundred to three thousand dollars. When I was looking at how to propose, um, the current elderly exemption to make us more, uh, in line with being, you know, in the middle of those, um, municipalities, I came up with, um, certain levels, and what I tried to do is I tried to, uh, fairly estimate around between seven hundred and thirty dollars up to almost eight hundred dollars, depending on the category. So, every category would get roughly the same amount off of their bill. So, I didn't say, okay, eighty, eighty-plus, you know, let's go up, um, to a hundred and ninety-five thousand, which would be about a seven hundred and fifty-dollar decrease in their bill, to say a hundred and fourth or, or ninety thousand dollars, or a hundred and four thousand dollars for, for, um, sixty-five to seventy-four, which would have reduced theirs down a little bit. So, what I tried to do is I tried to make everybody be in that seven hundred to seven hundred, eight hundred dollar figure with the reduction. Um, the other reason knowing is that in two thousand twenty-six, we're gonna be doing a revaluation, so that is another item that when we do do the revow, I don't have an idea of where we'll be and how much things will go up. Um, cost of living has gone up for everybody, every age bracket, from twenty-somethings to, to eighty, ninety-year-olds. However, the earning capacity for our elderly is less than, um, than, than a twenty-something year old. Um, you know, uh, it's kinda hard for an eighty-nine-year-old mother or grandmother to go out there and work eight hours at Walmart to supplement her income or his income. Um, so, what I try to look at is try to make it as fair as possible, and I understand that by granting these exemptions, if the council so sees fit, it's gonna cost every taxpayer. But it's, what I also tried to do is I took that into account, too. Uh, when I looked at it, it'll be about, um, six million dollars of assessed value coming off the rolls, and that six million dollars then will be dispersed in the tax rate to the remaining homes. It's only a penny on the tax rate. Now, yes, a penny could, is, and some people could break the bank, but overall, I thought that that was as fair as possible, that we didn't overburn in the rest of the community by jacking these up so much more. The other thing I looked at is that there are a lot of different housing in some of these brackets, and it's supposed to help with the taxes. It isn't supposed to eliminate the taxes totally for everybody in that category. However, there are some, um, houses or values in some of these categories where their tax bill will be zero. And looking at that, I tried to look at what those values were versus what this, what I'm proposing to, to try to make it so that it was fair as well in those areas, knowing that what we've seen in the past with, uh, with, um, the tax dating and those, those kinds of properties that we've seen in the past in tax dating, where, where the values are. So, I try to look at that as well. Um, so what I'm proposing is that, uh, we raise the elderly exemption amount off the assessed value from eighty-five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand for the category of, um, seventy, sixty-five to seventy-four. Seventy-five to seventy-nine, I increase it from a hundred and fifteen thousand to a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and for eighty-plus, go from a hundred and fifty to one ninety-five. That will put us directly in the middle of those communities. There'll be three above us and three below us, um, knowing that in two thousand twenty-six, we might have to look at, um, look at the value again after. Um, and like I said, the, there's three components, there's the assessed value, there's the income limits, and then there's the investment limits. I think investment limits and income limits were pretty well right in the, income limits were at the high end, but the, uh, I mean, not the income limits, the assess, asset limit were at the high end. Income limits were right in the middle, from what I've shown, what I, we talked about in February, so. The council, uh, can move this forward, it doesn't have to go to town vote, so the council can bring this forward. It would be, uh, an adjustment to RSA one seventy-eight, um, article two, which is where we talk about the elderly exemption. Uh, we'd still have to go to, through the three readings, and at the end, if the council did wanna do this, they would have to make these adjustments retroactive back to April first. The reason why we can do that is we're not changing the income limit or the asset limit. So, these are people that are already qualified for the exemption. We're just changing what the exemption amount assets for the valuation would be.
So, Paul, you're asking for changes, for acceptance of the proposed elderly exemption amounts?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Most by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy, I believe, yes.
Do you need anything more than that?
Uh, no, uh, actually.
Retroactive?
Nope, not yet.
Should I say changes to the chair? Yeah, I was gonna say it's.
Not yet. What I need is, there is one more thing to move to a public hearing.
That's what I was thinking.
Because this will be considered our first read.
I make a motion to move to the public hearing, the proposed elderly, elderly exemption amounts.
And the date of the retroactive date?
Uh, it would be for April first, can we get it on April? We're gonna try to push for, well, we're gonna try to push for April eighth. Um, we might not be able to get in the paper in time, uh, because of the way April, not April, April tenth, the way April tenth falls.
To be scheduled when possible.
When possible, yes. And then, uh, with the public hearing, that's when we'll insert the retro, because I'll change that to, say, retro to April first.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Very good. So, there's no further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, six zero zero. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Next, item ten is the council's to be presented with Rotary Club of Merrimack's proposed project to build ten changing stalls in the junior camp cabin at Wasserman Park.
So, I'm gonna speak for the next hour and a half on this?
No, you have.
He's so fresh.
The Rotary has stepped up to the plate again like they have done in years past. Um, they asked Matt what a good project might be down at Wasserman Park. Um, it's to, if anybody's familiar with Wasserman Park, if you're familiar with the beach, we have a cabin that sits off to the left. If you're looking from the beach, the last cabin to the left, and that's usually the, what we call the changing room. There was two bathrooms in there, and then that's basically open area with curtain. So, what the Rotary would like to do is they would like to actually build changing rooms, um, in that area so that, um, the, uh, so there are individual changing rooms, so people could go in there and change, um, in the, in that cabin, so that, um, you know, they have some privacy instead of just a curtain. Um, so, that's what the Rotary is looking to do a project for.
They do such nice things for the town.
They do.
You know?
And they're always willing to step up. If there's a project that they can take on, they, they always ask, um, about projects. You know, I called them up, um, yesterday, I said, hey, uh, I know it's late notice, but can I get in front of you to talk about the budget? And they, they actually said, um, this was yesterday, they said, could you come tomorrow morning? I'm like, I got another meeting scheduled at, that time, but can I come, you know, the next Thursday? And they were, yeah, we can, we can fit you in to talk. So, they're always, they always like talking, they always like listening, um, and doing what's right for the town, you know? They did, uh, they did the big project when we renovated Bice Fields, the playground, they stepped up and did the fundraising for that. They've done the pavilion down at, uh, Watson Park. The ma-, you know, they've, they've really stepped up, and they've always there, willing to help. If they can take on a project, they will, um, you know, and, and people ask, well, why do you allow them to use some of your property and put a sign out, say, for the, uh, electronic, uh, the electronic recycling, which is gonna be, I think, in first, uh, June seventh or eighth in, uh, in June, um, because that money comes back to the town of Merrimack. They raised the money and it comes back to the town of Merrimack. It's like friends and family, Merrimack friends and family. They use our property, but the money comes back to the town, and they're, they're, they're always willing to help, they're always willing to, what we need to help out, whether it's, it's an elderly person or, or what we need, so whether it's the Lions Club stepping up for, the Lioness Club stepping up at Christmas time, or Easter time with the Easter baskets, you know, we have great partners in this town that are willing to step up, and the Rotary is, is one of them that if we need something, they're willing to, if they can do it, they will.
That's right.
Absolutely. All right, so.
I'll make a motion that the Town Council approve the Rotary Club of Merrimack's, uh, proposed project to build ten changing stall, ten changing stalls in the junior camp cabin at the Wasserman Park.
Showed by McKenzie, second by Nancy Harrington. There's no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, six zero zero. Thank you to the, thanks to the Rotary. The February twenty-seventh minutes.
Do you want a motion first, or? I have one thing, actually, it's a question for Paul on this one, I'm not sure if it's, I believe this needs to be changed. Page, um, three, um, under number three, where it says to create a smartphone app, and then the third, uh, fourth one down, uh, fourth bullet down, says there's an upcoming webinar on Drupal ten for smartphone app. Am I correct that that's supposed to be, there's an upgrade to Drupal ten for the website, and then?
Maybe that should read, there is an upcoming webinar on Drupal ten, which would include the smart, a smartphone app.
Okay.
That's all you see, Jim?
Yeah, is it a webinar or it's an upgrade?
It was, it was a webinar.
Oh, okay.
We, we, Sharon and myself and, um, Jonathan attended the webinar.
Gotcha.
And, uh, we are getting some pricing for, um, the upgrade, and I think it will check this goal right off. It was, yeah. It, it actually, I was like, really? They have included a lot more than, than what they wanted to charge us, a lot more money for, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
That's good to hear.
That's all I had.
You wanna propose?
Sure, um, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from February twenty-seventh.
Second. You did the work, you should get the.
As amended. As corrected, I guess it would be. And second, uh, motion by Jennifer, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? I will abstain. Thank you so much, so, five zero one. March twelfth minutes, it was a special session after deliberative session?
I move to approve the minutes from March twelfth, special section, session after deliberative session.
Second.
motion by Nancy Harrington, second by, that was you, Jennifer? Jennifer? No discussion? All those in favor of the, uh, minutes for March twelfth special session signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, six zero zero. Comments from the press and public? See no one here? Comments from the council? I just wanna say, I gotta wish my dear mother, who turned ninety-two today, happy birthday.
God bless her.
Yep, it's a wonderful day, and I'm here, and you're having cake without me, so.
They'll save some for you.
I've been told that already, so. If there's nothing further?
Motion to adjourn?
I'm waiting for them.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, six zero zero. Thank you.